Welcome back from our lunch break. We'll go on to our next item, six point seven, consideration of presentation by Lime Foundation of Next Gen Trades Academy. And this is sponsored by Supervisor Pyska and Vice Chair Rasmussen.
Well, I am absolutely delighted to have my longtime friend here with us to talk about her work, not just in her field, which is in roofing, but also the development of Lime Foundation and the work that she's been doing to support people getting into the trade. So I'm going to go ahead and read your bio. Latisha Hankey, it is Hankey though, right? Because I did not grow up with you having that name. Okay, Latisha Hankey, CEO, ARS Roofing and Gutter and founder of the Lime Foundation. Raised in Lake County, Latisha Hankey was recognized from a young age for her musical talents. She played the trumpet and we had band together and pursued that passion at Sonoma State University where she studied performing arts and recording arts. An unexpected opportunity led Latisha into roofing, the roofing industry where she managed to manage a prominent North Bay Roofing Company for eight years prior to founding her own business, ARS Roofing and Gutters in 2008. Latisha is now celebrating twenty-nine years in the industry and leading a team of twenty-four full-time employees who serve communities across the North Bay. Latisha's entrepreneurial success is matched by her commitment to service. In 2015, she founded the Lime Foundation, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit dedicated to uplifting youth, seniors, and underserved communities. Through its three core programs, the Lime Foundation provides access to health and wellness services, promotes music and the arts, and offers vocational training in construction trades, empowering at-risk youth with skills that lead to lasting careers. Latisha's work has earned widespread recognition, including a Walmart Community Playmaker Award presented by the Golden State Warriors. Featured guest appearances on two Emmy award-winning shows, The Kelly Clarkson Show and Mike Rowe's Returning the Favor. And she was also named Sonoma County Woman of the Year by Congressman Mike Thompson in 2021. Latisha brings to Lake County a legacy of perseverance, community leadership, and a proven commitment to creating opportunities for others to thrive.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming here today.
Thank you all for having me here today. I'm really excited to just tell you a little bit about the program. So I thought maybe I would share my screen and just kind of go through a little bit of history of what the program is all about. And then if you have any questions, I'm here to answer questions and I can kind of let you know as well how you guys could help us have a very successful program. So let's see if I can share this.
Did Brad have anything to add, Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jessica covered that very well. I'm sorry, Supervisor Pyska.
Network, oops, Supervisor Pyska. Okay, I won't call you Jessica today. So first of all, the Lime Foundation is a nonprofit, 501(c)(3) that I started back in 2015. It all kind of got started because I went to college, graduated from Middletown High School. And I was seventeen, went off to college because my parents told me to go to college. I did not know what I wanted to do in college. I just went, I'm a musician. So I'm like, well, I'll just go to school to be a rock star and just do music for three years. But I was broke all through my college career. And then in my junior year, I got a receptionist position with a roofing company. I started just answering phones and filing. But by the time I got to my senior year, I became the manager of that company after about a year. And I got a pretty big raise and ended up dropping out of college in my senior year. So I spent another few years running the company and my boss came to me and said, hey, you know, I want to retire out of this industry. Will you buy my company? I'm like, I'm not a roofer. He said, are you willing to learn? I'm like, sure. You know, when you're in your twenties, you're like, sure, why not? Right? So I said, sure, why not? Spent another few years learning how to roof. And then when he retired, I bought the assets of his company and started my own company in 2004 and got my contractor's license. So now I'm the CEO of my own company for the last twenty-one years. And quickly I started working with a lot of contractors and we'd have meetings all the time and we would talk about the same thing over and over again, how we couldn't find young people that wanted to go into the trades or we couldn't get them to stay, you know, working. And I said, well, I think it's mainly because they don't really know about the opportunity. I didn't know about it. And I said, if I started a program where I would train young people and teach them more about it, would you guys be willing to mentor them and hire them? And they all said yes. And that's how this all got started. So we service our at-risk youth. These are youth that have, you know, they're, you know, foster youth. They've been in and out of juvenile hall or some of them just maybe have absentee parents. I mean, the list kind of goes on when you talk about at-risk. And so that's who we've been servicing since we started the program. And the program is called the Next Gen Trades Academy. And so I'm just going to go through really quickly kind of what the program is all about. Right now is a three-week course. When we first started, it was sixteen weeks. And then we would do surveys with the students and they're like, oh, it's a little too long. So then we got it down to ten weeks. And then COVID hit. And when COVID hit, we had to turn the program into like a Zoom platform. And so we shortened it a little bit more. And we realized that doing it by Zoom or in person still netted the same results. The graduates got hired, whether it was on Zoom or in person. So now it's a three-week hybrid program. So we do some of the classes online and some of them in person. We've been doing it mainly in Sonoma County, but we expanded about a year and a half ago to Marin County, to Marin City and Napa Counties as well. And then recently we just expanded to Menasino County. And now I'm here to expand to Lake County and I'll tell you a little bit more about that in just a moment. The training is just simple. We introduce them to different trades. We have up to twenty-seven different trades that we introduce them to, whether it's roofing. I try to get them to be roofers. They never want to be roofers. Solar contractors, they can be solar, electrical, plumbing, up to twenty-seven different trades. And we do some additional training as well with them. And we simply tell them about how they can go into these trades and see what they're interested in. And then we introduce them to the employers and then the employers hire them. That's really the simple part of it. The program is free to the students, so they do not have to pay for that program. It's all covered under grants and other funding that we get. And we normally serve ages sixteen to twenty-four, but some of the private classes that we've done goes all the way up to age thirty. But right now for this grant purposes, it's going to be the ages sixteen to twenty-four. We've been recruiting from different high schools. Right now we're working with about twenty-three different high schools between Sonoma and Marin and such. We have twenty-three nonprofits, eleven community organizations, and then two probation departments. We have not contacted the probation department up here yet, so we're still in that process right now. And like I said, we're up to twenty-seven different trades that we're introducing to the youth. So that's the basic part of the program. In addition to it being hybrid or in-person, we have workshops as well that we do in the class. First of all, we teach about stress management. Now I know as like adults, I need it. I'm forty-nine. I still need stress management. But we teach them how to deal with stress management, meaning, you know, how to be able to deal with the kind of stresses that we deal with every day without drugs and alcohol. Or just showing them different ways that they can manage that. We bring in specialists to do that. We also do an interview and public speaking course, so that way when they're going to those interviews, they'll nail that interview. We teach them how to walk in properly without flip-flops and cutoffs and stuff. We do a resume and cover letter as well with them, so that way they can have, you know, really good resumes and cover letters. Financial literacy is probably one of the most important parts that we do. And we bring in local banks and branches to actually teach them. So we like to work with the community. Real estate, we also have taught several of our youth how to be able to buy homes or property. And we've had several be able to buy condos or homes with family members and such. And now they're, you know, very much thriving. And we learned that they just simply didn't know the steps. So we're teaching them the steps. And then we also teach them about business entrepreneurship, so that way we can help them actually start businesses. We do have several of our graduates that are now licensed contractors and they hire from the program. So we've already gone full circle over the last ten years. And then we do health and nutrition, because when they would come into our class, they would have Red Bulls and Doritos in their hands for breakfast, lunch, and dinner. So in health and nutrition, we're just teaching them how they can, you know, have better energy and better overall health by bringing in also locals that will teach that class. So that's all a part of the program. As far as statistics go, this is as of our 2024 statistics, I can only see a portion of it. But we've had, come on, go up this way. There we go. So as of last year, just 2024 only, we serviced a hundred and ten students. We're on track for 2025 to actually service a hundred and thirty by the end of this year, for this year alone. Last year, again, just with these stats, eighty-seven of those hundred and ten graduated from the program. And sixty-six percent of the eighty-seven are all hired right now. And we tend to stay around that sixty-six to seventy-four percent. That's where we've hovered ever since we started the program. And then the other students that didn't get hired, they're either still in the process. They weren't quite ready. So we're still giving them training or they've gone off to college or some of them have just kind of scattered. And then lastly, I have an emphasis on getting more females into our construction industry because the numbers are still very low. And as of 2024, we were at thirteen percent of our students are, they identify as female. And then ninety-two percent of our students serve our low to moderate income. So that kind of gives you a little bit of demographic of who we're servicing. Last couple of things, what did the graduates get when they graduate besides a job? They do earn a stipend up to five hundred and fifty dollars, either in gift cards or as an actual stipend. They get gear. All their tools are all included in the grant. So when they graduate from the program, they get all the basic tools that they're needing. So they don't have to pay for any of that. They earn a safety OSHA. They have to actually pass their ten-hour safety OSHA to even pass the class. They get uniforms and a plaque and then of course their job placement. And a lot of negotiations that we do with the contractors is that they start at at least twenty dollars an hour, all the way up to twenty-five. In Sonoma County and Marin County, the rate's been a little higher, twenty-three to twenty-five starting. But up here, we're negotiating for somewhere between twenty to twenty-five for them to start with no experience. We've done job placement in all of these counties so far, looking to add Lake County on there by next year. So Sonoma County, Marin, Napa, Solano, and the Bay Area, we've been able to get students hired and about five or six out of state as well. This is our recent graduation class that we just had a graduation about three weeks ago. And this, I just wanted to include a photo because I love it. These are our recent graduates. We do a graduation once a year where they all, all the graduates come together for that year. And this is our recent class that we just had a few weeks ago. Last couple of things here, affordable housing. We do have a division of our nonprofit where we are addressing the affordable housing issue over in Sonoma, Sonoma County. We've partnered with Nonprofit Call Homes for the Homeless with these pods that we have. They're pretty cool. They're over in Sonoma County right now. And we're working on different areas. Right now we've been placing them in Texas, but we're working on being able to place them here in California. And then eventually we're going to build a warehouse, so that way we can manufacture them here with our graduates. And we're also building an eighty, these are eighty U's that were built in Sonoma County. So far there's been eight of them built. They were approved by the County of Sonoma. So we are looking to create an opportunity as well for youth. If there's any kind of affordable housing being built up here, we're hoping to be able to get our graduates involved in that. So that way we can make sure that they have continuous work here in Lake County. And then the last slide here, I just wanted to let you guys know that the cost of this program per student is four thousand two hundred and thirty dollars. That's, you know, all the costs for instructors and career navigators and everything that I mentioned earlier. But we did secure a one point one eight six million dollar grant for that called Cal CRG Go Biz. And the grant is geared around the fight against drugs. And so they want to help, this program is going to help our youth early on to get them careers and opportunities. So that way we can steer them in a positive direction. And I'm really proud to be coming back home, you know, here in Lake County to be able to do that after doing the program in other areas. We're right now going to be able to do nine classes over the next three years. And our first class will be with the Hance Community Center, Community Center, Community School, right here in Lake Forest. And that starts in October. So we've secured that with them already. So that will be our first class. And then our second class will be with NCO in Clear Lake, so that way we can service Clear Lake and Lower Lake students. And then my biggest hope is to be in Middletown. I'm still in my, I'm still in negotiations right now. But that's my hope is to bring it back to my old high school and have the program there by late spring. And then we're just going to continue that cycle, so that way we're servicing students here in this area, then over there in Clear Lake area, and then in Middletown for those nine classes, and then hope that we're able to continue with the grant and continue with the program. We've partnered with NCO, so that way we're working together. So basically our program is because they've had a great, successful program called Build. So we're going to be kind of the pre-program, phase one, I would call it, we're phase one, where we're going to introduce the youth to the program. And then out of our program, we're going to pick like the top six or eight to move on to NCO's program, which is a more extensive program. So we found a way to be able to partner together and work together to just make it more successful for the youth. And we're going to be bringing in the dollars to use as much as we can here in Lake County. So all the tools that we buy, we're going to buy from here, all the food that we use for the students, we're going to buy it all from here. So we could just bring all that money here. So that's, that's about it. So if you guys have any questions, I have my little ask me questions slide. So thank you.
Well, for the nine classes in Lake County, will that take the whole one point eight million or?
Yeah, yeah. We did the budget based on it, so it should use up the whole thing, pretty much. We're going to make sure it does. We're putting all that money back in here, so we're going to make sure it does.
Thank you.
And that's for what timeframe?
It starts from June first, this past June first until like twenty twenty-eight? Is that my math? Yes. So, yeah, it's like one class this year. We're going to do three classes next year, another three the following year, and then two the following year.
That's really exciting. You know that you have two graduates from Middletown High School sitting up here, right?
Yes. And up here too? Who else? Oh, you are? I didn't know that. Oh, so you're just excited to get back to Middletown. Yes, I'm very excited to get back to Middletown. Yeah, I can't wait. You guys have any other questions?
I don't have any questions. I think the program is, sounds familiar. Appreciate you coming to Lake County to offer such a program. I know that we have some of those programs, but we could use a whole lot more. And everybody needs an opportunity and we don't have enough. And everybody needs an opportunity, and we don't have enough space in the programs we have to, uh, have as many students that want to be involved. Even the, the NCO program, I'm sure you know, since you've had conversations with them. They start out with like sixty or seventy applications and they end up with six. Uh, that is a lot of people left behind that have an opportunity to do something. And it looks like you're coming here to offer those positions, uh, offer those candidates' positions or other candidates' other positions. So I, I think it's great. The more we offer, the better off we are.
Yes.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? I'll open it up for public comment. Anyone from the chambers? Anyone on Zoom? All right.
I'll just make one more comment. I'm a very big fan of our community colleges. I hope that you'll build a relationship with them. I know that Mendocino works with NCO with the, uh, construction program. There's other trades that are also at the other colleges, so I hope you'll build those relationships, because I think it's a warm handoff from what you will be doing as well, so.
It's the other reason why I'm here today, because we just need help with those connections. We want to build those. That's the first thing I did when I came up here. NCO was the very first phone call that I made, you know? And that was almost a year ago when we first started talking about the program, because I want to as well build those relationships and collaborate and work together. So I just need the connections, you know? I need, I don't know all the programs that are up here yet. I'm still in that process. So just having that introduction will help us make sure that we're doing that. So if you want to do that for me, I appreciate it.
Happy to connect.
Yeah, I'll, I'll touch, touch base with them. We have plenty of time to make sure that we're doing that. And I just want to make sure there's a pathway for them, you know? If, if they go through our program and they don't get into NCO, or they don't get a job right away, I want to be able to build other pathways for them. So some of the students that we have now, maybe they go and work, you know, they're at Target for a little while to build up their resume, you know? We just want them to be able to work somewhere and have something positive and know that later on, they can move on to that next level. So I just need as many connections as possible, so.
If you bring a target with you, I think we can have a much better conversation.
I can work on that, you know? Thank you guys again so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you want to add anything else?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I'm just so excited. I, I've been so proud of my friend for decades. Um, and I know that this is just a really big moment for you to bring this back home, and give back to this community. So I, it's, it's amazing. We, you know, we do have other programs, but we know the need is really great here. And I, it just like really makes me happy that you remember, um, and recognize how great the need is here.
If, if those other programs, if you guys want to, you know, again, connect me with them, I'd love finding ways to collaborate together, because sometimes we find out there's pieces that, like, uh, with NCO, you know, we've got the grant funds to buy the tools. So now NCO doesn't have to use their funds to buy tools, because our grant covers that. So we want to be able to see how we can collaborate. They can keep that money back into their program and be able to use it for other services. So that's what I want, is more connection. So if you want to email me those, I'll.
Well, you've already met with NCO, that's what I was talking about.
I did with NCO, but if there's other programs, um, just, yeah, let me know who those people are and I'll definitely contact them. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you for the presentation.
I'll see you soon.
And close this item.
Would you be able to leave a card?
Yeah, I, I have my cards here. Give me some. Thank you.
It's on, isn't it on the, uh?
Two cards? I'll leave a few.
Yeah. I thought it was on the, uh, presentation, no?
Yeah, my contact info?
Yeah.
Oh, it's on the presentation.
Oh, yeah, yes, on the presentation. I got out of there.
All right, we'll go ahead and you said we'll take a, all right, we'll take a five-minute break. Two.
Better?
All right, welcome back from the break. We'll move on to our six-point-eight. Consideration of direction to staff to take steps necessary to proceed with the notice of intent to file an application with Lake Local Agency Formation Commission, LAFCO, to initiate dissolution proceedings for Scotts Valley Water Conservation District. Vice Chair Rasmussen, this is sponsored by you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Supervisors. I want to start with a, a brief background on the Scotts Valley Water Conservation District. This was a district that was created in nineteen-seventy-two when, um, property owners and/or voters from approximately a hundred parcels of land within the Scotts Valley area, um, went and got a petition from, uh, the required amount of, of their property owners to bring that forward to the Board of Supervisors to create the Scotts Valley Water Conservation District. And again, that was, that was for about a hundred parcels, uh, not the entire Scotts Valley, just a hundred parcels within it. Because at the time, people could opt out. They didn't have to be involved if they didn't want to. And so it came to the Board of Supervisors, which, um, accepted the petition and, um, passed a resolution calling for a special election, also in nineteen-seventy-two, to answer the question as to whether or not that district should be formed. And if it was to be formed, to also then elect its first, uh, three directors. There's three board members and/or directors, uh, for that district. So that, that question passed, the district was formed, and the first three directors were elected. The reasons, um, for the original petition and why that district was created included six reasons. One of those, number one was, and not in any order of importance, but one was to, uh, allow them to conserve and enhance water supply and riparian rights. Another one was to monitor projects that were proposed and/or approved at the time, including the Scotts Creek Dam and flash dams that were going to be installed by the city of Lakeport in that area. None of those projects ever happened due to, uh, a lawsuit on the dam. And it got ordered, uh, to be unapproved by the, the state water board after this lawsuit in Lake County Superior Court. And it never came back. Number three was to, um, give the district the ability to, um, provide a legal entity for governing agencies to consult with regarding solutions for mutual water and flood control concerns in that area. Another one was, uh, basically to, uh, monitor and if necessary, take legal action against the city of Lakeport for their drawing of water out of the Scotts Valley aquifer, which they've done for, for long before this. And then number five was to, again, enable the district to act in concert to solve problems of available water and distributions and/or matters of flood control, including, uh, increasing water or decreasing water, increasing water in the summer when necessary for, uh, farming and worrying about reducing flood flows in the wintertime. So, um, basically, in the, in the, the last, I would probably say twenty years, really what that district had focused on was the part about monitoring the city of Lakeport. That's mainly what, what they've been doing. Some years ago, after this district was created, the city of Lakeport got an updated water agreement with Yolo County Flood Control that allows them to draw by right without fee seven-hundred-and-fifty acre feet per year. Um, they can go over it, um, for another, uh, I believe, two-thousand acre feet that they would have to start paying for per acre foot if that happened. In the last fifteen years, the city of Lakeport's only gone over the seven-hundred-and-fifty acre feet by right by a very small amount, and that was in twenty-thirteen. So generally, they're, they're always, um, under the seven-hundred-and-fifty acre feet for the draw. So like I said, mostly, that district's been focusing on that part of it. They don't have any facilities. They don't provide any other services. They don't have any online materials. In fact, you, you can't find anything about this district if you were go searching on the, the internet for it. They, when they were created, they did have an initial approval by the LAFCO, uh, for the creation, but they should have had some other municipal service review over the past fifty-three years. That hasn't been done. In fact, when I talked to LAFCO, they didn't even know this district existed. Nor did most people in the county of Lake or out at the, uh, property owners out there. The average person, if you brought this up, wouldn't know what it is. They do hold about twenty-five thousand dollars in our treasury that is believed to have come from tax assessments. The initial petition and the resolution talked about the Board of Supervisors agreeing to loan eight-hundred-and-fifteen dollars in startup money to that district to be repaid to the county when sufficient assessments were, were reached. There is a record that appears to confirm that that eight-fifteen was repaid. However, we no longer have, we haven't been collecting any tax assessments for who knows how long, probably decades. Um, there are no records left in existence that, that even show how that assessment went or who was paying it or anything like that. Um, so it's just, the money's been sitting there for a long time. The only activity with it that ever comes up is the interest it earns and the very small amounts that it has to pay out every two years or four years when an election comes up, these elected directors, that they have to pay to our, register our voters, which is not a significant amount, because most of the time, there's not an actual election on the ballot. It is an election. They have to file, but there's never more candidates than spaces, so it doesn't go on the ballot. Um, the, one of the district, one of the divisions, it's three divisions in that hundred parcels, hasn't been filled for over ten years, going on eleven. The current two directors that are in there, one expires in December this year. She's not rerunning. She has told me twice, or at least once to me in writing, and I have other documents that she is not going to run for reelection. And she supports the dissolution of this district. She believes that it's accomplished its mission and it's no longer needed. The other director I've talked to verbally, and he has indicated that he doesn't oppose LAFCO taking a review of this, this district to see, see if it's, uh, providing service. I've done a lot of research on this in the past, uh, probably four months. We have four department heads here that I've talked to numerous times about it. The tax collector, the auditor controller, who have checked for financial records. Register our voter, who I've talked to about this, because she's happened to run these elections. It's supposed to be every four years, but it seems to come up every two years because of the, uh, the unfilled vacancy. And then it, it's also come in front of this board for, for appointments in the past. So I think it really needs to be reviewed by LAFCO. I don't think it's any longer serving a purpose. I don't think it's necessary. I don't think it's good governance to keep it going. But the process is that, you know, we can't dissolve it. LAFCO can go through that process. Um, the, it's, it is very complex. There's, there's conflicting information in the law. When you look at the water code, it indicates that there has to be a petition by voters in a special election. However, that has largely been overridden by, um, the Local Government Reorganization Act of the year two thousand, which, um, also allows the government a code, one of the sections of the government code, to allow for a local governing agency, including the Board of Supervisors, to petition for this by resolution of application to LAFCO without having to wait for the voters to bring you a petition and request an election to answer the question of, uh, dissolution. So, um, and I'm just about to wrap it up, but I've talked to water resources, because a lot of these reasons that this district was created, we have our own flood control district. lot of these reasons that this district was created, we have our own flood control district, we have Water Resources Department that is largely doing a lot of those same things. In fact, we've got projects already in the works out in Scotts Valley that's being managed by our Water Resources regarding flood control. Not a question to answer today, but if this ultimately gets dissolved, it would come back to this board to wind up the affairs. We'd become the successor agency for the sole purpose of winding up that district. It would be at that time that we would discuss where the money goes, but the law really indicates that upon dissolution for something like this, it would need to be directed to a project that benefited that footprint where this district was created. So there's also a legal question about whether or not any of that money could be used for the county to pay for this process we're going through. I don't, I'm not proposing that be answered today. I don't know if it's legal, nor if it would be the appropriate thing to do. But as far as our costs to do this, the current estimate from LAFCO is about $2,000 for the county to run through this process. It started out at a 5,000 estimate. If we do approve this and send in a resolution, we have to give LAFCO $2,000 for the application fee. But based on their research and discussions with the state, the total cost is expected to be around $2,000 for the county to ask LAFCO to run through this process. The reason for the reduced amount is because, again, if the Board of Supervisors is the one to request this, there are streamlined processes that LAFCO can go through without doing a full municipal service review. There's a modified way they can do it if it were to be requested by the board. If it was by the public, it would have to go a different process. So with that, at this point, what's in front of you is a request to consider directing staff to move forward with the public notice process, the 21-day process, which they would start and they would send out the notice. It would come back to our board, once that 21 days is up, to consider on putting the resolution of application forward to LAFCO. And I can answer questions if the board has any, and likewise, I ask the department heads to be here in case questions came up for your board. So with that, I will wrap up the presentation.
All right. Supervisor Sabatier?
I think sending it to LAFCO is probably the best, just because it'll do a much deeper dive to figure out if the dissolution is the proper way to go. I've experienced some of those, and it's not just a simple process. You want to make sure that everything is done and completed properly. I'm going to say that I slightly disagree with one of the board members. What you stated was that their goal was done. I think it's still an ongoing goal of flood control, an ongoing goal of ensuring that Lakeport and their well and things like that are done correctly. You mentioned, I believe, in your memo about the possibility of consolidating some of those issues, or maybe you've already consolidated some of those issues into your Scotts Valley Community Advisory Council. I'm wondering if you can speak to that, because I think that would continue kind of the idea, just take out the financial aspect of it, but just still move the conversation, because that conversation still very much exists, and those concerns still exist over in that area.
Yes, and if I may first clarify on, that was a statement from one of the directors who said she believed the mission was accomplished, based on my belief of her focus about that one, one of the six reasons, which was monitoring the city of Lakeport. So, sorry if there was confusion there, but I was trying to relay what she had stated, what her thought was. 100% agree. I have already presented this to the Scotts Valley Advisory Council, one for transparency, to let people in the area know what was going on and what my thoughts were, and also to put it in front of them to state that they were very well-suited to continue to advocate and/or monitor a lot of these issues that are still on the table, because they are very active and they're still going on. We still have water concerns, we still have flood concerns, happens every year. But now that this board has created the Scotts Valley Municipal Council, they are a board that's very well-suited and positioned to take input from the public and also to monitor these issues. They have, by, I can say, you know, they were in full agreement that they want to continue to be involved and hear these things in front of them. So, and then also, on the other part of it, I have arranged with the city of Lakeport to now, at least once annually, go in front of the Scotts Valley Municipal Council to give them a report on the city of Lakeport's water usage from the aquifer in Scotts Valley, and to answer any questions about what's going on with their water system. They've happily agreed to do that, they've already done their first one for 2025 back in June, so hopefully that helped answer some of those questions.
I think that's perfect, that's perfect. My only other question, really doesn't matter if the LAFCO process aims towards dissolution, because I'm just kind of curious as to how and when did we stop collecting taxes, but rather than trying to figure that out, let's see if the dissolution is the right way to go, because then that will take care of that problem.
I would love to have an answer for that question for you, and unfortunately, was not able to come up with it. I do have a request into the Water Conservation District to see if by chance, maybe they have something from years ago, but I also think that that's going to be, LAFCO's going to thoroughly dig into this, and maybe something will come out, but I think our department heads on the financial side can maybe offer, I don't think it's going to be an answer that's going to really give us a lot, but I would welcome that if the chair's, if the board's ready for that.
Yeah, we're ready for that. Go ahead.
Just addressing the tax, there was one year, it appears the first year after the resolution, there was one year of taxes assessed, the $815 was paid back, and then it's interest, and then, of course, the election fee. Is the only activity of a 20-year report here where that's...
Patrick Sullivan, Treasury Tax Collector. I would just add that our system has no records going back that far, this all predates megabyte, and so unless there were delinquencies or other enforcement going on, we don't have any knowledge of that. And as far as physical records go from that period, which is not fully known, we no longer have those either. So there really is no way to, no matter how much we invest in terms of resources, I don't know that we can go any deeper here.
Any other comments? Any on Zoom? All right, I'll bring it back to the board, closed public comment.
So, have we already opened to the public?
Yeah.
Okay, so then, unless our board has further questions, I'm ready to make a motion.
Yeah. Go ahead, Lloyd.
Did you want to add something, Lloyd?
No, just a quick note that with the recommended action being direction of staff, it can be given by motion or consensus.
Okay. Do you have a preference?
It's not a public hearing, so it can be given by consensus, as long as, if your board wishes to go with the recommended action as it's...
He has it, I've seen just...
I think we have consensus.
I've said yes, she's said yes, Bruno's nodding his head.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Susan.
Yes, whose staff are we giving direction to?
Oh, that's right.
Well...
Thank you.
I can try to address that. At this point, I think it would be direction to the C O and any of her department who she deems appropriate to assist with the 21-day notice, as well as the follow-up with the application and resolution for a later date. Does that help?
All right. With that consensus, that closes this item on the agenda, and we'll go...
Chair, can I offer something? Could we track the time spent on that, so that when we end up discussing potentially in the future the $25,000 left over, that we can take a look at that?
Yes, I can track. The only, I do know that, I do know that the fund is restricted, so there may not be eligible expenses, but we can look into that, we can track.
All right. With that, we'll close that item, and we'll move on to our calendar, 7.1. Who would like to start?
I'll start.
Go ahead Supervisor Sabatier.
So, I need to make it to the registrar voters to get my paperwork done that I didn't get done in time. Then tomorrow, I have an APC LTA board meeting, it'll be here in City Hall in Lakeport. Did get a phone call, I know a couple of us did, and I routed that to, I know a couple of us also routed it to admin. There seems to be interest in hydrogen production, and so planning to meet with some of those folks and with admin tomorrow, I think with admin tomorrow. Talking to the COC tomorrow, Continuum of Care for Funding Discussions with our now board-approved fiscal agent with the Lake County Community Foundations. School at Canock Unified is starting tomorrow as well, so expect to see the roads packed in the morning and in the afternoon. Starting Judge's Breakfast on Thursday morning at 7:00 a.m., we are going to have the Maha Project providing a presentation and update, so that those folks down south area, not in the Middletown area, could get a little bit of an update of what's going on. It's been a little while since we've heard from them. Then I am, let's see, official meeting, CSAC Finance Update will be happening a little bit later. I did go through a CSAC Health Update on Monday. It was all really, really good news coming from the federal government, and I say that as sarcastically as possible. There really just wasn't much good news to say, but they, basically the same things we've been hearing from our Behavioral Health and from our Social Services Directors, to let us know and keep us up to date as to what's going on. Another COC Strategic Planning Committee meeting, and then finishing the day with the Yuba Community College Board District in the evening. Friday's pretty clear, and going to go see Aquanet Saturday, Concert in the Park in Austin Park. I have a CalCog meeting, which is, I've had the wonderful privilege of being chosen to be the CalCog Board Member for APC, and luckily, they have virtual meetings, and I don't always have to travel for those. So I'll have that on Monday, I'll be here on Tuesday on the 19th.
Okay. Not quite as together as I should be on this, so let me read it off my calendar itself. I have a meeting at the courthouse here tomorrow with Lloyd, our attorney, and county council. I have animal control advisory committee meeting, right, on Thursday as well, and Lake County Rodeo will be meeting at my place on Thursday evening. No, that's Wednesday, I'm sorry, that was Wednesday. I have a meeting on Spay and Neuters, Fix Cat in Kalistoga on Wednesday, Lake County Recreation Meeting, and Math on Thursday, those are the Thursdays, and on the 15th, Middletown Central Park is doing, they have Cash Creek, and if anybody's aware, knows about this band, they are homegrown, they went to Middletown School, a lot of them, and they'll be playing at Central Park for a fundraiser on August 15th. Let me get the time. I think it's a dinner and dance, and it's at 6:00 p.m. So this is the local band that used to be Way Out West and Silver Creek also, known as them, and some of those guys have made it big. I know, I don't know if Kimo's going to be here, but he was raised in Pope Valley, and he actually plays currently with Alabama. So we have some really cool people that have been out there doing it that will be playing in Middletown after that Saturday. I know I've got some stuff on the weekend, too. I've also got to set up a meeting with Caltrans this week.
All right. Supervisor Sabatier?
Tomorrow morning, having a planning meeting for the Cobb Valley Fire Anniversary. I'm not sure if the NCO Monthly Check-In for Home Hardening is happening. I am also meeting with the Kaloma Group in the afternoon, and then Big Valley Advisory Committee Meeting in the evening. Thursday, Space Committee, Resilient Communities Call, and then Lake Rec and a little bit later. And then Friday, I have a constituent meeting in the morning, Coal Creek Advisory. I do not think I'm going to make the NCO Head Start 60th Anniversary in Ukiah, because I have another meeting about wool in Lake County, Wool Scour Feasibility Study for Lake County. But this week, the work is starting on Coal Creek, so I'm hoping one of these days I can pop in, see the work that's been going on. Soccer season opens on Saturday, so opening day for Clear Lake Youth Soccer, Saturday morning, and then every Saturday for several months. I'll be doing that. And then Monday, meeting with C O, and then Risk Reduction Authority, and then back on Tuesday.
Vice Chair?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a meeting with somebody from Sopra Reis, and that's wanting to do a fire-wise type of a town hall in Lakeport. I met with the Lakeport Mayor, just on discussing issues between the city and the county. I met with Esther Formula, who's going through a permitting process to expand their business out in South Lakeport. I went to the Northern Rural Energy Public Agency meeting last week, attended the COC Regular and Executive Committee Meetings last week, also had my regular meeting with the city manager of Lakeport, attended the Rotary 100 Year Anniversary this weekend, and celebrating all the projects they've done for 100 years. I completed my Ethics and Conflict Training, I was due now to get that updated. I'll have Lakeport Fire Board tonight, I'll be with Supervisor Sabatier at the B VAC, meeting Wednesday, which will have fire-wise items as well as Sonoma Power, Clean Power will be doing the outreach at that meeting. And then, let's see, I will attend the Animal Control Advisory Meeting again tomorrow. And I'm also going to meet with this hydrogen company that's coming into Lake County tomorrow, and I'll be at the APC LTA meeting with Supervisor Sabatier. And then on Thursday, I'm going to volunteer at the Cinema by the Shore Movie Night at Abboton Park in Lakeport. And then I'm also going to be in that meeting with Supervisor Sabatier on this wool possible project that wants to discuss their possibility of putting in an application for something somewhere around Big Valley area, I believe. And that wraps it up.
All right. I think the same group for the hydrogen, I think I'll see them tonight.
Okay.
Yeah. I think his name's Mr. Cunningham or something like that, yeah. So I'll see him tonight, be at R C R C tomorrow, because I'm traveling there tonight, then going to the Golden State Natural Resources Board Meeting in Tooleamnee on the 14th, so that'll be Thursday. Coming back here, if I can make it in time, for a constituent meeting I have in Clear Lake Oaks. If not, I'll push it back to Monday. If I have that Monday, then I'll be going from there to the Risk Reduction Authority Meeting on Monday, and then back here on Tuesday for the Board of Supervisors Meeting. All right, calendar's done. It looks like we have one last item on the agenda, which is our 8.1. Public Employee Appointment Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, Interviews for Animal Care and Control Director, Appointment of Animal Control, Animal Care and Control Director. With that, we'll see you after closed session. With that, we'll see you after closed session.